We've got 15 minutes.
9:46, okay. We have one more member to join us, so we'll just wait a few more minutes. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Will please stand and Pastor Merle Quimbley lead us in prayer.
Our God and our Father, we come before you today, a needy people. We need your grace, we need your favor, we need your strength. You know us, you remember us, you made us out of dust, and yet you breathed into us the breath of life, and we're alive today to your glory. And we pause, Lord, to thank you for this beautiful day in Arizona. We thank you, Lord, that we're a resident here, and that you have blessed us all the time we've known here. Now, Lord, we come before you for these supervisors. They need you, Lord, because there's many problems to solve and many more to come. And we remember, Lord, that you're the one that gives the intellect, the thinking capacity to solve problems. The citizens of this area need their help, need their decisions, so we thank you for what will be the outcome. And now, Lord, we're reminded of what Micah the prophet asked us. What does the Lord require of thee? The answer is but to do justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with thy God. We ask all of these favors now, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 38-43103. Need a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on June 5th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for the discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the ARS 38-43103 portions A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Mr. Esplin, any items for litigation?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Committee and legislative reports, we'll start with on my left Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Arizona-Utah Economic Development Coalition along with the chairman. There are counterparts commissioners from Utah were there, along with representatives from mining. It was a good meeting. We came up with, we're putting together resolutions on the monument withdrawal for four of those. The numbers for uranium, coal, and gas have been refined to show upwards of the money that we had mentioned before. And when we get those resolutions, we'll probably bring some back to the board to see if the board would go along in submitting resolutions on monument withdrawals. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop?
I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Anket?
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Moss?
Nothing this morning, thank you.
And thank you Supervisor Johnson for indicating what we did over the past week. County Administrator's report?
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. And there are no minutes for approval this morning. Okay, we'll go on to call the public. Those wishing to address the board to the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out a subet, a file, to the clerk at the back of the room. The request to speak forms are located in the back room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding in criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. I have one person signed up to speak this morning, Mr. Ken Works. Morning, Mr. Works.
Good morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Works, 2250 Crystal Springs Road, Yucca, 86438. I have a picture here of a road grader. It's Navajo County road grader, it's been in service for 37 years. It's kind of, they're saying that it's kind of a bad thing to have to keep something in service for that long. I think it's a good thing. To replace that vehicle now, that piece of equipment would cost at least four, it was made in 1980, that's when the county bought it. It would cost at least four or five times that amount right now to replace it. I think the longer you can keep like something like that operational and serviceable, I think it's better, not worse. But that being said, I think Mike Hendricks has done an outstanding job since our 2008 depression, or if you want to call it that. I think he's done an outstanding job in keeping things together and through the loss of revenue for the county through that time period. I think that my property taxes are just now starting to catch up to what they were when that first started happening. So it's been, it's been almost 10 years with subpar receipts for property taxes. I think that sales taxes are the way to go. When I'm going down I-40 and stopping at the truck stops to fuel up and get something to eat, there's so much, there's so much activity going on in those places that it seems like there's plenty of opportunity to make money with sales taxes when you see all that activity going on around. And it hasn't seemed to gone down since, since the depression started in 2008. But I think that if we're gonna see taxes raised, I'd prefer to see the sales tax raised because it won't go down if the property values go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Works.
Mr. Chairman? If I might, just to remind the thing I forgot to bring up. The desert landscape conservation cooperative, there's 22 of those around the US. Through Quad State, we've been trying to get membership in that because it's mostly government bureaucrats that are in it. And we finally got membership into that, so we're the first government agency that we're part of that's been allowed in. And it's kind of good news and bad news. We can't complain anymore that they don't allow any governments in, so at least we got, finally got membership in that.
Very good, thank you for your report. All right, we'll move on now to presentations. Presentation by Judge Charles Gertler, presiding Superior Court Judge on an action item auction at the town site property in Chloride, Arizona. Judge Gertler will be presenting us with some great news.
Good morning, may it please the Chairman, board members, counsel, and administration. From time to time over the last several decades, people have come into the recorder's office and have asked, how do I obtain title to property in the Chloride Town Site? The recorder would always have the same answer. You need to go to the presiding judge to obtain a deed to the property. And by ARS Section 9-1101, the presiding judge is vested with the authority to convey title to town site properties. The problem has been that over the years, the various presiding judges have been unwilling to act on this and for a number of very valid reasons. There are town site lots that are actually situated such that the road cuts through it. There are other buildings and structures that turn around and encroach into a, you know, a town site lot. And, you know, no presiding judge was willing to turn around and transfer title when there might have been encroachments. We had no idea what was in inventory, we had no idea, you know, what the problems may be. And inevitably, you know, the presiding judge would tell the applicant, are you willing to go out and have the property surveyed? And they didn't want to incur that expense, and likewise, the county did not want to incur the expense. And so actually, the driving force behind all of this was our former treasurer and good friend Carol Myers. It was very important to her to see, she asked if I would not see this through. And with great cooperation from the recorder's office and the assessor's office and the Attorney General's office, we have worked out a program by which we can auction some of the properties off. Melody Jensen in the assessor's office was absolutely phenomenal. She was able to obtain, going through all the records and inventory of what town site lots there are. She utilized the GPS system to be able to identify problems with various lots. And I have a couple of photos that demonstrate what we were discussing or what was referenced with respect to why some of the presiding judges were unwilling to move forward. On this particular photo, the red outlines the lot that is in the town site. It cuts across another lot, and there's a building that's located on it. Similar photo. Again, the small rectangular piece is the lot, and again, there's another structure that is built into the town site lot. I have one photo that demonstrates the issue. Here you can see that Fourth Street is situated such that it literally goes through the length of the rectangular lot. In working with the Attorney General's office, we went through the process of trying to decipher the various codes. Because the, actually, it started with the federal code, Title 43, that I believe was enacted by Congress back in the 1800s, provided for a system for the creation of these town site lots, or townships, and then the sale of the lots. At the time of statehood, the legislature then passed laws with respect to the town sites, and they set up two different systems, one for town sites that existed as of the time of statehood, and one for town sites that would be created after Arizona became a state. We have been able to discern that the Chloride Town Site was one that was created after the, Arizona became a state. The part of the issue, or the problem, was that in handling or trying to do a sale, the presiding judge, or whoever was going to do the auction, would have to post a bond. The clerk of the court already has a bond posted to the state, and our clerk, Verlinton L., has agreed to handle the money, and the AG's office is comfortable with that scenario. In order to turn around and actually sell any of the properties at auction, ARS Section 9-1117 specifies the ability of the trustee to sell the lots. The problem is that since this statute was created in 1913, has never been updated, is very archaic. In order for the trustee to sell a lot, I have to have three people that are qualified appraise the property, and those individuals are entitled to remuneration for the appraisal, however they receive $5 a day. There is no appraiser, let alone a broker, in Mojave County that is going to be willing to turn around and do an appraisal at $5 a day. And fortunately, Jeanne Kent, our assessor, has agreed that she will have three of the people in the assessor's office, who certainly are qualified to give, you know, appraisals of property and determine fair market value. They will take each one of the lots that are ultimately going to be auctioned and provide us with the, you know, appraised value or the fair market value in order for the presiding judge to proceed to an auction. We currently have an account, and that is through the clerk's office, that has approximately $1,800 in the account. The reason for that is the last sale of a Chloride Town Site lot was completed when retired Chief Justice Frank X. Gordon was the presiding judge in Mojave County. And so we believe this was back in the 60s. So there's been approximately $1,800 that has been sitting in this account forever and a day. So I've worked with the Attorney General's office, they have agreed that I can utilize the money in that account to do the public notices that are required under statute. So I intend to have one public notice with respect to a public meeting in Chloride, so I can go over this process with anyone that may be interested at Chloride. I then will have to notice the actual auction. And after the auction is complete, I will have to notice a third meeting because under the statute, the money that is received from this auction or the sale of the lots does not go to the county general fund. It actually would go into this Chloride Town Site account. The statute provides that any money that is received is to be spent as determined by the trustee from meeting with the people in the town site as to what improvements they want. The reason that the whole process has been somewhat accelerated is because this week after I came back from sitting on the Supreme Court at oral argument, there were two letters on my desk, they opened, and I have two checks totaling approximately $38,000 for the purchase of two of the lots. And this is the very reason that Carol Meyer decided or wanted that this process be completed because we have approximately 20 to 25 lots that simply are not on the county's tax roll, that should be on the tax roll. In addition, in working with the AG's office and reviewing the statutes and discerning which ones are applicable, those properties that have encroachments on them, there is a special statutory provision with respect to that. And any applicant that desires to purchase that lot, that can establish that they have come on and built improvements with a value of at least $100, has the right to automatically purchase that lot at the fair market value. I would not have to auction that particular lot. I mean, obviously, the idea behind the auction is to hopefully generate interest and increase the purchase price. But the legislature has deemed someone that has, you know, done any type of improvement to a lot is entitled to purchase it outright at the fair market value determined by the three people that provide the appraisal. So I will notice various lots for auction. If someone applies, they actually have to come to court, I have to conduct a hearing. Unfortunately, AG's office says we cannot charge them a filing fee because the statute doesn't provide for that. So I have to conduct an evidentiary hearing and determine if they have actually entered the property and did an improvement of at least $100. If they do that, then I have the ability to sell that lot to them directly for what the fair market value is. In accordance with the statute, we will be providing at that final town hall meeting an accounting to the people so that they understand, you know, what were the expenses of the publication, what were the expenses to the assessor. There's a nominal fee that is to be paid to the presiding judge, I'm gonna waive that fee. I don't need to worry about $5 for a deed and trying to recall that come time to do my tax return. So I'm certainly not going to, I'm not going to take that fee. And then obviously showing what the deductions were from the sales prices advised, this is how much money you have to work with, and folks, tell me what you want to do. And that literally, at least will, this will at least provide a process, you know, for future presiding judges because I have no doubt that we're probably not gonna sell all 20, 25 lots at an auction. But at least a process will be in place so that we can ultimately get these lots onto the tax roll. And as far as I know, I believe Yucca is the only other town site in Mojave County. And, you know, they may be in a similar situation, so at least we'll have a template for being able to, you know, transfer title to these properties. Any questions?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, I think the courts have done an amazing job with this, and thank you for generating revenue, that's a very good thing in today's day and age.
Well, again, I would like to thank the assessor's office and the recorder's office because they, and in particular, Melody Jensen, she was instrumental in being able to work with the AG's office to move this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you're saying the town sites don't have to pay property taxes? We've been collecting no taxes all these years?
We've been collecting no taxes on those. Those are actually still vested in the state of Arizona. And the, actually, when, working with the AG's office, and I have worked with three different Assistant Attorney Generals on this project, their request was, judge, if you can move forward and do an auction, do it because there's, you know, potential liability to the state if someone was injured on one of these town sites because the state still owns it.
Some of those pictures showed, well, some encroachment with buildings on the lots. Was there one or more that have actual structures that have been built on these lots?
Absolutely.
And those people have not paid taxes?
No.
And you're gonna give them the first right to buy it?
They have the first right to buy at fair market value, provided they follow the process of coming to court and establishing that they have the improvement.
How would that work with, so somebody buys it, and up until, what, 20 years ago, we still had no planning and zoning permits in that area. Will we be giving them an occupancy?
What I intend to do, you have very capable counsel in Mr. Esplin. The deed that will be conveying title will be done as is, without warranty, without representation. It's simply a transfer of whatever interests the state of Arizona has, and they're taking it, as we would say in the real estate field, warts and all.
And so, I guess just to clarify it again, if, because that one structure looked like a very, pretty good-sized structure. Was there quite a few that had structures on them?
The, most of the structures were basically, you know, encroaching what looks like to be a few feet into a lot. The, in particular, there was one lot that has the community association on it. And, you know, a good-sized building, and that is part of the park. Well, the statute provides that the trustee can do a dedication of that parcel. So I don't intend to auction the parcel where the park and the community association building is. Rather, I will do a dedication, but I want the association to, you know, either advise that they are incorporated or that they are an LLC, so that when the dedication is complete, that they will have the responsibility for continued maintenance of it. So if they haven't, you know, incorporated or become an LLC, I will suggest to them, do that, and then I can just simply record the dedication, and then we don't have to worry about that particular lot.
So that building, for all those years, has not paid us any taxes, and we're just gonna gift it to them in a way where they don't have to pay taxes in the future?
The statute says that if it's a park, dedicate it to be a park.
Thank you, thank you. Well, with no other comments, Judge Gertler?
Yes, I have a couple of comments, and I have one question, Mr. Gertler. Will all of the town site properties be appraised, and then a list available to the public? Is that correct?
I intend at the first open meeting that I have to be able to provide to, you know, anyone that attends, the list of the properties. I will probably, I haven't decided this yet or not, but I will probably include within the public notice that is published a specific listing of the parcel numbers that would be subject to the auction. The, it's probably gonna be a fairly expensive publication because I will have to include wording in there to the extent that some of those parcels could end up being sold directly to individuals in accordance with statute and not auctioned. Because again, if someone comes in and establishes in court that they've entered the property, they've done their improvement, that house that encroaches two feet into a lot, that person comes in and says, this is my house, yeah, it encroaches two feet, the value of the improvement exceeds $100, they're going to have a right to purchase that lot directly, and then it would not be auctioned.
And it would be the value of the improvements within that two foot?
No, the value is only the value of the dirt.
All righty, well, speaking for the citizens of Chloride, since I'm a longtime resident there, 20 years, I still have a part-time home there on the weekends. I just want to say thank you very much for all of the hard work that you've put into this, and Frank Gordon as well, back in the 60s, and then the late Carol Meyer, she was working hard on this, and Melody Jensen, you know, she's amazing, and she's solved a lot of problems for Mojave County over the years. So I am just really thrilled to see this come in full circle because there are a lot of homes that encroach because they could do that and get away with it years back. And now it has become a problem in Chloride, and it's gonna solve a lot of those problems. So kudos, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judge Gertler, thank you very much for all the work you've been doing on this. Good luck.
Good luck in dealing with the folks in Chloride, and good luck with warts and all.
Thank you.
I'll be there with you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. The following items under, listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Items to be removed: Supervisor Johnson.
None, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bishop.
None.
Supervisor Angus.
None.
Supervisor Moss.
None.
Unbelievable.
This seems like a record.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried. Let the notes that that was a unanimous decision on the consent agenda. Going to the regular agenda. Item number 29. We have a discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-054 for the rezone of assessor's parcel number 36326-04-011B from highway commercial zone to agricultural residential zone to allow for a single-family residence use in the Dolan Springs vicinity, Mojave County general area. That's east of Highway US 93 on the north side of Pierce Ferry Road, Mojave County. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote at the April 12, 2017, meeting, and continued by this board at the May 1 meeting. We have one person sign up to speak to that item. Mr. Jacoby, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Russell Jacoby. I live at 16374 Lamelia Street in Dolan Springs, Arizona, 86441.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I found Dolan Springs 20 years ago quite by accident, and it was love at first sight for me. I was raised in Las Vegas, and Dolan Springs reminded me of Las Vegas when I was a kid. I could see the opportunity, the beauty, and I was quite taken back with it upon my first visit. Actually, on my first visit, the first place I stopped was this property because it was a real estate office back in those days. And I was impressed with all the activity in Dolan Springs on that Saturday afternoon. It was, it was quite a, quite an eye-opening experience for me as I was headed out to Meadview to see some old friends that had moved out there. That same day, we bought property in Dolan Springs through a brand-new family trust for our grandchildren. And subsequently, I was so excited, I convinced several family members, and especially business associates of mine, some friends since we were kids in Las Vegas, to also invest in Mojave County with the caveat and the promise that I would come out of retirement and manage anything that we happened to acquire in Mojave County, which I have done for the last 18 years. I, Dolan Springs desperately needs economic opportunities, commercial businesses, and jobs. I've tried to do what we can to create those, and we sure have. I mean, we've done some, some good things over there and in Mojave County. But this particular property is part of the community plan that we did, I don't know, maybe 15 years ago, with several other, other active community people in Dolan Springs. It was intended for commercial use. It is now zoned for commercial use. There's an awful lot of properties that are residential. I certainly encourage people to move there. Like every day, I try to do that as a goal, but this property, I believe, could be a fabulous economic advantage for Dolan Springs if the zoning was to stay commercial and it was developed as a commercial site. Another point of interest could be that we, I made a deal this past Saturday to give a piece of property, free and clear, if that developer from Las Vegas will do what I'm asking today, and that is to develop it as a commercial activity, to create jobs much needed in Dolan Springs. So we've kind of put our money where our mouth is, and I would appreciate the board's possible consideration to keep this as a commercial, commercial property that's much needed in our area.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
I have a question for Mr. Jacoby.
Mr. Jacoby, please. Back to the podium.
My pleasure.
Would you mind just explaining to me what your vision is for the Dolan Springs area from Highway 93 into the community of Dolan Springs? I know you've, you've been thinking about this for 20 years, so, and you offered free, free commercial property to anyone that would develop a commercial business, so can you just take a real quick?
Well, what I, what I would like to see, and what we're trying to do, is offer property, property that we've accumulated over the years and accumulated with, with, again, several family members, some business associates I've known, it seems like forever, my attorney for the last 20 years, Benjamin Childs, and such, to create economic opportunity. We have plans for a tree nursery there. I think, once that is began and it's successful, there is going to be a lot of activity along that regard. We have several properties earmarked for that exact purpose. That will come about when we know we have enough water, but Dolan Springs has everything. It has the location, 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 we all know that in real estate, but it also has water, it also has sunshine, it also has fair weather, it has the climate for it. And I see small strip centers, that's what we're doing downtown, directly across the street from the fire station. We have five properties there, but that major corner is prime for a service station, a small convenience store, and a small strip center this gentleman has in Las Vegas. If you'll do that in Dolan Springs, create those jobs, it's yours. And I've, I've hand-checked, I've committed to that. Down further south, not very far from, from the property in question, we have seven and a half acres, that is earmarked for that specific purpose, and it is free. It's there.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we plan on doing that as much as we can in Dolan Springs, but also on 93. Now we have that Chevron station coming in at the corner, it's going to be a big boom. It's fabulous thing, and thank you so much for your support of that activity. It happens slow. I've been in Las Vegas for way longer than I'd even like to admit to, and you saw that growth, so slow, so slow, so slow, until boom, here it is, bam, and look at it now.
I agree with the coming Interstate 11 and the new businesses that are going in on Pierce Ferry and 93. Pierce Ferry Road is prime for commercial development and may be our next industrial corridor, and that's looking way down the future, but, you know, we have to look.
Not only very well could be, I do believe that it is.
Yeah, we have to plan for the future, and I appreciate you bringing your, your offer of free commercial property to a developer, that's quite the incentive, and thank you very much for your time.
Very good. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby.
Yes.
And?
Are there any other speakers?
No other speakers.
With that being in mind, I would like to make a motion that we deny this rezone of assessor's parcel number 32604011B and leave it commercial for future development.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second for the property to remain commercial. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 30. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-039 regarding the petition to establish approximately two and a half miles of section of Pepper Mill Palms Boulevard from Highway 91 to Scenic Boulevard in the scenic area of Mojave County as a county highway. And we have Mr. Lutowski here this morning. Mr. Lutowski?
Good morning, Chairman Watson and members of the board. This concerns a petition from the public to establish approximately 2.5 miles of Pepper Mill Palms Boulevard in the scenic area from County Route 91 as a county highway. Some background, staff has processed this petition through the Transportation Commission, which has recommended denial to the board of establishing this as a county highway. The Pepper Mill Palms Boulevard roadway was contemplated and initiated development back in 1989. It was actually in concert with a subdivision development that was planned in the area at the time, and subsequently, about five years later in 1994, the subdivision failed to move forward, yet the right-of-way was conveyed to Mojave County by the developer at that time. Staff in reviewing the, and I personally inspected it as well, in reviewing this particular section of road, do find that it does not meet, the improved roadway does not meet Mojave County standards for acceptance under our regular maintenance program for paved roadways. The roadway width, the traveled way width, is not 24 feet, and there isn't proper development of the shoulder areas. Now, under the county highway petition process, essentially what the public is requesting is county participation and county lead and funding in making the necessary improvements to bring a roadway such as this up to regular standards for maintenance. And staff reasons that a reconstruct and rebuild to county standards would be in the amount about north of $800,000. That would be to establish a asphaltic concrete pavement. So as a result of the current condition, staff, as well as the Transportation Commission, do recommend denial of this particular petition.
Question for Mr. Lutowski.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. It's a golf course at the end, is there also a motocross track at the end?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, yes, I do understand that there is a, this roadway does provide an outlet to various local roadways, which in fact involves a particular property that has been a venue for motocross-type events.
Do you know when the motocross was put in?
As far as Johnson, no, I do not. I do know that they had an event earlier this year.
Just another reason why we need to make sure when we bring these businesses in, we start getting the roads paved. You made available to them the idea they can form an improvement district with their people to bring it up to standards?
Supervisor Johnson, absolutely. Public Works maintains an outstanding handout and information that we make available to petitioners as it relates to the county highway process, the improvement district process, as well as the regular road maintenance petition process and tertiary petition process. Those latter two processes would be, as well as improvement districts, as you know, would be entailing private participation in roadway development and funding.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. One of the questions I have, Mr. Lutowski, is have we put any type of device there to measure the number of vehicles used that road?
Yes, I believe as part of our county highway petition review process, we actually have that, that information. But I don't, I do not, it may be that we did not count the roadway, possibly because we do not maintain the roadway. I do not see the count noted, so, but by and large, having been out there personally, I do find that the roadway largely serves a golf course-related traffic generation, as well as an array of, you know, rural properties further to the east.
Right, when I, when I looked at the property, I just was estimating that probably 200 to 300 vehicles a day would probably be in that range. That be a reasonable conclusion?
Based on the time that I spent out there, I think that would be a fair, fair assessment.
Thank you. We have one other person that would like to speak to this item, but if you'll remain handy for us. Mr. Jeffrey Gross. Morning, Mr. Gross.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Gross, 6750 East Camelback Road in Scottsdale. I represent Oasis Recreational Properties, which is the owner of the Palms Golf Course, and we are the applicant for this petition to accept Pepper Mill Palms into the roadway maintenance system as a county highway. I think one thing we can all agree to is that the road's in very bad condition. It's got potholes, in fact, it's dangerous and it has caused damage to vehicles. We submitted photos to the Transportation Commission along with our package. Some of you may have been out there and looked at the, at the roadway, and it's bad, it's very bad. We've submitted petitions initially of 57 people with the petition for the, for the county highway. We since, prior to the Transportation Commission meeting, submitted approximately 252 more signatures of folks who agree that Pepper Mill Palms needs to be repaired, and the way to do that is to accept it as a county highway. We have the support of the owner of the motocross, it's Mesquite MX Park, they also own the Smoke and Gun Club down there, which is also accessed off of Pepper Mill Palms. Between the golf course and the motocross track and the gun club, they do bring substantial revenues. As we inform the county, the Transportation Commission, since 2006, the golf course has paid $1,006,000 in sales tax, and that's despite the intervening years in the Great Depression. The motocross, the gun club, they're holding special events out there. One of the things that causes, causes concern, not only to the businesses, but we also have talked to the Littlefield Fire District, the Littlefield Fire Department, I think it is, and they also support this petition, is that there are problems with getting first responders out to the property, there are problems with safety of vehicles traveling on the road. We understand the sensitivity of the cost. Accepting the county highway, the Pepper Mill Palms as a county highway doesn't necessarily Accepting the county highway, the Peppermint Palms as a county highway doesn't necessarily entail that all those costs need to be incurred at once. The roadway can be done in sections. The worst part over the state land piece initially, so the cost can be apportioned. There are other, we believe, other avenues for saving costs as well over that eight-hundred thousand dollars. So for those reasons, to keep this as a functioning, these functioning properties, to keep them from generate, to generate revenues for the county, we ask that this petition be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Or any question for Mr. Gross?
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Lutowski or the applicant, but in looking at the photographs, is this, was this once a paved road? Was this hard surface or is this gravel? It's hard to tell by the photographs.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, yes, it was at one point established as a paved roadway, but it has since deteriorated quite considerably.
And who paved the road?
Supervisor Bishop, I do not have a record of who facilitated the paving, because that would have been undertaken by a private entity and not Mojave County. Mojave County's involvement up to the present year has been only to administer the right-of-way that was conveyed by Arizona State Lands to Mojave County in nineteen-ninety, roughly.
Okay, so and since we have a paved road that has deteriorated and it's full of potholes, and now the business people and residents, I assume, want us to come in and fix it and then maintain it. Is that correct?
Supervisor Bishop, that's essentially the essence of the petition. I should clearly state that this roadway has not been, nor currently is, in the Mojave County road maintenance system, and this is not unusual for a road such as this. But as part of the petition, there is interest in Mojave County via the county highway process to undertake expense in improving the roadway to Mojave County maintenance standards, regular maintenance standards. But I should also point out that the Resolution Two Thousand-Dash-Fifty, which sets forth the parameters by which the county establishes county highways, should this be accepted in the county highway, should this be established as a county highway, it does not by default bring the roadway into the Mojave County maintenance system. In fact, there is no guarantee that any project would be undertaken and that such project would have to be directed by the board and/or programmed through the Mojave County Five-Year Capital Improvement Road Program.
So what, I'm just wondering why, if they want the road maintained by Mojave County, the hard surfacing looks like it's outlived its usefulness. Remove that and then bring the road up to county standards and then have us maintain it as a dirt road. Is that a viable option?
Supervisor Bishop, actually returning the roadway to an unsurfaced or gravel condition would be an option. And as a result, the public could petition a, through regular road maintenance, or perhaps, and it would involve staff or review, but perhaps through the tertiary road maintenance process, provided that the road is returned to an unsurfaced condition. Now, whether or not that's the interest of the public, I could not comment on that.
Okay. Or an improvement district could be formed?
Absolutely, yes. The improvement district to adequately distribute the cost of that improvement to a multitude of properties, and the respective property owners is certainly an option as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Bishop. I have a couple comments. This obviously is in my district, and I'm certainly understanding the need for that piece of road to be improved to the point where it's a pretty rough road. And as I indicated to the petitioners, that if they could come to Mojave County with an idea or a plan to bring this road up to one of our standards, that it would be possible to bring it into regular maintenance or tertiary as an unpaved road. I think it's still an option. I certainly don't believe that eight-hundred thousand dollars for this particular road project is one which would rate very high on my agenda. So with that piece of information, I'll open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny Board Resolution Two Thousand Seventeen-Dash-Zero-Three-Nine in accordance with the Transportation Commission's recommendation. We're currently in a situation where we're eight to nine million dollars a year behind our necessary road budget, and if we were to do this, we would be adding almost another million dollars on top of that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And motion carried unanimously. Item number thirty-one is an item that I bring to the board for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen-Dash-Zero-Six-Three conveying support for the Walupi water settlement. I'm hoping that each of you have had an opportunity to briefly look at the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number Two Zero-One-Seven-Dash-Zero-Six-Three conveying support for the Walupi settlement agreement.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no discussion. I'm waiting for the other board member. We've had, been discussing item number thirty-one. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the resolution. Any further questions? Do you have a question? Okay. There being no further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? And motion carried unanimously. And thank you very much. Item number thirty-two brought to us by Supervisor Buster Johnson for the discussion, possible action, the update on the call to the public by Mr. Bryant Braithwaite regarding road conditions on Antares Road in the vicinity of Huntington Avenue and Classical Drive intersection. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if Mr. Lutowski could address this issue. Quite a few things were brought up, but I think aren't anywhere close to being the truth, so I thought I'd share it with the rest of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that correction.
Thank you, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson. This entails the call to the public in which Mr. Braithwaite represented some certain concerns with regard to his property, which is situated west of Antares Road in the vicinity of Huntington Road. And staff did significant research into the most recent activities as relates to Mr. Braithwaite, as well as our own road maintenance activities on Antares Road. We have subsequently interacted with Mr. Braithwaite directly on the matter. Essentially, to sum things up, the staff found that Mr. Braithwaite in December was cited with a misdemeanor for creating a ditch along Huntington Road west of Antares Road, the more-or-less channel flow that was being, approaching his property. Mojave County and our road maintenance division, with regard to regular road maintenance of unsurfaced roadways, maintain a standing practice of grading in such a manner to preserve the historic flow of washes and other drainage where it intersects county roadways. And in this instance, we have found that Public Works may have deviated that between blade operators on Antares Road whereby flows that normally crossed in and around the Antares Huntington Road section were actually going down Huntington Road at one time. Nonetheless, Mr. Braithwaite did take the action he did. But subsequent to that now, we have, through our review of our blading operations in the area, have since maintained blading in such a manner whereby flows crossing Antares Road are now conveyed in such a manner per the historic flow. And we have further coordinated that position and efforts with Mr. Braithwaite. So we do believe he is now satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. Any further questions?
That's all I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that, you know, the person in front of us had actually been cited for things that he was claiming that we had done.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. So be no further action on that item. Item number thirty-three. Discussion, possible action regarding the reassignment of position number nine-seven-zero-zero-one-four. Records manager to the clerk of the board's office effective May twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen. Authorized staff to continue to work with the recorder's office to ensure a smooth transition of duties. This is brought to us by Supervisor Buster Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody has the backup and the reason I'd put it on. Records management's obviously a big part of what the county does. Every department has it in the way it's with, previously been had, held is that we've had the records manager in the recorder's office. And I think that to bring all of our records up to date, especially the ones that we keep with the, that have pertain to the Board of Supervisors, that's just a matter of moving that person over and putting them under the direction of the clerk of the board, and I think it would better serve the county that way. I know the recorder's here and has a difference of opinion.
Okay, we have one person signed up to item number thirty-three. Ms. Christie Blair, our recorder.
Good morning. Do you want me to state my name? Chairman Watson and members of the board, I am confident that you have read all the documentation submitted for this item, especially my letter to Supervisor Johnson. I hope you know that I always want to do what's best for the county, but I do strongly oppose this item, not only because I would be losing an extremely valuable employee, but I am unclear as to the purpose of this change. What value will this add to the county that it doesn't currently have? The sheer amount of space to centralized records would be unbelievably costly. The records currently that have been centralized through the repurposing of the warehouse shows that we are already at capacity. That is why most departments are still responsible for the care of their own records, and we know best how to respond to records requests. To move to a complete centralized record center would be cost prohibitive, and in doing so, one records manager would not be able to manage the volume for every department. This action would also severely hamper the operation in the recorder's office. By statute, we are required to have all official records on microfilm, and we have used our own facility as a cost savings measure. I will still need to have a micrographic supervisor to manage this operation and to oversee the quality control that this position is responsible for. The decision to combine the records manager position with a micrographic supervisor in the recorder's office was a decision made as a cost savings measure to the county. It works. The statute has not changed. There should be an analysis of what is best for the county. What is the value of centralizing? What does direct supervision require? Who is paying for this? Again, what is the purpose of this change at this time? Therefore, I respectfully ask you to ensure that this is what truly is best for Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any further discussion?
I have nothing further. I mean, I put it in the backup, what I thought. I think that, you know, for the transparency that the board is always asking for and everything, it's no reflection upon the recorder's office at all, and this wasn't some brainstorm I came up with. There's a lot of counties that handle it that way. I think our clerk could use the help in there with records management and bringing things up to date, because as all of our departments have struggled going from the twentieth to the twenty-first century, it'd still be the, the records manager would still oversee all the other departments, or not oversee them, but help them and assist them and everything that they're doing. But I think it gives them more of a free hand to maybe be more proactive if they were situated under the clerk of the board. That was my reasoning.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I did it because the budget was coming up, so that was the time to do it. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Supervisor Bishop?
I'd like to ask the, Christie, our county recorder, the duties that the records manager has now, how would they change in your opinion? And what of these duties is the records manager doing now that could be handled by your chief deputy? So if, you know, because I'm looking at the job descriptions of the records management and the chief deputy, and I'm not understanding how you will be at a loss and how the records manager can't keep up with workload he has now. But then, I'm hearing that the records manager wouldn't have enough of a workload if that position was moved to another area. So I am totally asking for you to help me explain or understand how this change will affect his duties.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, these positions since I've been here have been very closely tied. And what Mr. Ballard has done for the county as records manager is he does go out and he meets with the departments, and he helps them with their records retention. The disposal records are sent to the state archives. He's on the state archives board. But they're very closely tied to this go-to person that is instrumental to the recorder's office. To try and s-
Excuse me. I think what I'm asking is, what is he doing now that he won't be doing if we approve this? What are his special other duties as assigned?
He is, you know, maybe he's better able to answer that as well. It's, he's just a critical piece. He takes care of all of our, we're doing this massive digitizing project. We've started nineteen-ninety backwards. He oversees that whole operation of working with the staff, ensuring they know the process. He is the person that deals with our software program. He works with IT. Anytime we have a glitch, he's the person that we rely on to make that connection and resolve the issues. We recently had a huge IT issue that he was instrumental in working with IT and working with the software company, ensuring that process. He makes sure that the equipment and the staff know the processes of digitizing, and he's the expert in that field.
So would he not continue with those duties?
How can that continue if he's doing reporting to somebody else? That's sort of a day-to-day, we need this, we need that. And then he schedules the time that he goes and he meets with other departments. But as far as being an essential component to our office, it's a day-to-day basis. I don't know that, how he could continue to do that and be working in a whole other department. It's not that I can schedule when something's going to break down or when a staff member has a question that needs to be answered. And he schedules doing the records management. And each department pretty much manages their records. He assists and oversees. But to try and bring all the county records, just the assessor, treasurer, and recorder records would be a lot for one person. You bring in all the other departments and try and centralize all those records. That's a huge job. Right now, it's sort of that oversight and that expertise. And he goes out and he offers, you know, classes and assists departments, but it's not answering every department's records request or being minutely involved in that, because who better knows what the department needs or each department? because who better knows what the department needs or each department? And what a specific records request looks like? To try and centralize that under one person, I don't even know what that would look like.
I know change is hard, and I'm-
Absolutely.
I don't want to remove somebody that's a valuable part of your office, as you say it's your right arm, but I'm trying to figure out his secondary job functions that would go away and maybe enable him to be able to perform the Records Management job to where we wouldn't fall behind in all the other departments with what his job responsibilities are, lest the secondary performance-related work is required. I think that may be what the board is considering today, is freeing up some of his time so that he can do his Records Management job without the clerical and the mechanical and all the other support that he so superbly offers and is happy to do. So I think we're falling behind in some of the areas where we need him to function at a maybe a higher level.
And I just don't know that we even had a conversation to make us aware of what those issues are. We would totally be willing to accommodate whatever additional needs, but those have not even been raised to us. We're not even aware what extra things are falling by the wayside that need to be addressed. So to just take a staff member and have a May twenty-seventh date is a huge hardship for me to try and bring another person in and hire somebody new. Of course, change is always hard. I consider change the only constant in my life. So I'm trying to do what is best for the county, but I would hope to be able to have some conversations and see what the needs of the board are and how we can accommodate those within the structure that already exists, instead of taking an employee that is, and this position that is, as far as we knew, was working and performing at, very capably, and a staff member that has been with the Recorder's Office half of his life and uprooting, you know, if there's something that we are not performing, please share that with us and let's see and work together and see what we can accommodate and what is lacking and what the needs truly are. And that's really what I'm asking.
I think, Mr. Chairman, for me, I think maybe some of the confusion is coming from the centralization. I didn't expect us to put all the records inside the Clerk's Office. It was that, and I think Ms. Blair kind of gives a description of what probably could be the thing that I'm seeing. The, Mr. Ballard now will call our office and say, you got to have these records in, you got to destroy all these other records. He's not physically doing it himself. He's coming to our people and our staff and saying, these things have to be done. But I think what has happened over the years is, he's become that person in our office that's in the Recorder's Office that does all of their destroying of records and keeping of records and that thing, which I don't think is what the statute had in mind, had somebody who oversaw the collection and retention and the destruction of records in a timely manner as prescribed by law. And so I think with him being in the Clerk's Office, then he would be more able to go to each department and put out these needs, not that he'd be doing it himself, and that the Clerk's Office, not the Clerk, Recorder's Office now, it sounds like he might have been working a little out of his classification, they would just have to do the same thing all the rest of the offices do and handle it that themselves. I think that was the difference. Wasn't saying that he wasn't doing his job or anything. I'm just thinking, as we've grown and records keeping has become more of a mandatory thing that we're really scrutinized on, having this one person that could keep track of all of them and spend more time in other departments looking at these things and bringing us up to the twenty-first century would be a real help to the county. That was all.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Moss.
I would like to make, first, I'd like to say I think Supervisor Johnson has some good ideas here, and I think he's identified a real need. How we address that need, I think, is really the issue. And rather than it being a top-down focus, I think our recorder has actually identified the solution, which is, why don't we simply request that our recorder and Mr. Ballard reach out to the various departments and put a plan together that would address that need, as opposed to us saying, this is the fix, because we don't know if it necessarily will be the fix, and there may be some unintended consequences budget-wise when it comes to implementing that fix. So I would say that we should push this back two or three months and ask them to come back with a report on how they would have, how they would address the concerns that have been raised by Supervisor Johnson, and then we can compare the two to see what we need to be doing.
So that would be a motion?
That would be my motion, is to request that the recorder, Mr. Ballard, and the other impacted departments, our clerk, meet and confer and take what time is necessary in order for them to present us a proposal to address the concerns raised by Supervisor Johnson.
Very good. And timeframe?
Next three months, I would say. I'm not sure, or sooner. I'm not sure how much time they will need, but.
I think we need to make sure that the clerk knows sixty or ninety days.
Ninety days, and if they need more, they can always come and talk to us.
Thank you.
I guess a discussion. I don't know how that's going to change anything. I think we have, by statute, the Records Manager, and I think by having them doing day-to-day things for an apartment, whether it be in my office or anybody else's office, I think that takes away from the doing, or keeping us up to date on our records, and I think that was what I was looking at, to put him in charge, and then where the Recorder's Office, the things that Recorder Blair said that she had to have done. Obviously, he's overseeing those people, but he, you know, sometimes, you know, you rely on somebody because they're there all the time, and once they're gone, you start doing it yourself. That was it. I don't know that a thirty-day or sixty-day thing is going to change my opinion.
Supervisor Angus.
What is, Mr. Ballard can't do now that Supervisor Johnson wants him to? So if a department wants him to come and do a retention schedule, how far does he go? Like, what would he do? So if the clerk calls him in and wants something, what would be the procedure, and how would that change if he worked in the Clerk of the Board's Office? Or any department? I mean, right now, if someone says, we need some records retention information or whatever, what happens?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, he makes arrangements, sets it up, goes and meets with the department at their-
Okay, so what would happen if, after the change, that would be different? Can I ask the Clerk of the Court? I mean, Clerk of the Board?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, our vision is to have someone who is more hands-on to the departments. When we've had conversations, he comes and he will read the retention schedule, explain it, tell you what you have to do, but he is not hands-on. So part of the problem, I know, with our office, and even to some degree, I know a little bit in administration, is that, you know, to have someone come to help, I can read the retention schedule. We're looking for a more hands-on approach, where if an office calls, or even whether it's a constable's office, whether it's our office, whether it's the treasurer's office, it doesn't matter which office it is, we're looking for more hands-on assistance. And at this time, and I don't know if it's because, you know, he has more duties that he does in the Recorder's Office, or maybe it's just always been done that way, but as things progress and as the need for more public accessibility, for more accessibility by our own internal departments, we're hoping to see a little bit of change in hands-on assistance versus just, here's your retention schedule, fill out the form, and bring it back to me.
Okay, so that being said now, is there a reason why he hasn't been more hands-on? Is it something in his job description, or do you not think he has enough time?
Supervisor Angus, I believe he has not been asked. He has not been asked to, can you do this for me, that I am aware of? I don't know that that, this is the first time I've heard that, you know, we want more hands-on, because certainly we could, we are not against having him work more closely. We were unaware that there was, the departments were asking more than to, you know, guide them and show them what the process was. To actually ask for him to be doing that is the first I've heard of this.
Do you think that there'd be time with everything that you have this position do?
Yes, and what I see is, in a more conducive timeframe, that migration may make more sense. If the duties of Records Management, and you want somebody more hands-on, that that migration occurs. And what he provides to the Recorder's Office, I will have to find, and we go back to a split of having a micrographic supervisor to oversee the Micrographics Division in the Recorder's Office with the Records Manager. The reason that was done is a cost savings, but certainly it wasn't intended to not offer service to the county. And my understanding is the request to, well, can you do this for us? You know, we used to have an entire staff, and through budget reductions, we are ready to sell that facility. And when I first came on board, we did a huge project for the PDO of actually assisting them with scanning their records. We have done the medical examiner records. We still, you know, they're still out there. We have been hands-on to departments. The entire staff in the Recorder's Office has offered their services to assist other departments when they had scanning projects, when things got overwhelming for them. We have stepped up to the plate and done that. So this is the first time that I'm hearing that assistance is being asked for that we have not provided.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Moss.
And that goes back to my point is, you know, if I'm understanding all the comments correctly, there's a void that needs to be filled, but that void is not just simply transferring one person. Because once that person's transferred, there's going to be a void in the Recorder's Office that needs to be filled, and I suspect we're going to be in a bit of a jam. So that's why I thought it might be good to give it back to our various department heads and elected officials, have them work out a plan and come back to us, because I can see the domino effect where we're now funding more positions in the Recorder's Office, more equipment in the Clerk's Office, and it's just going to get, potentially, I see it getting out of hand.
Certainly has it up.
So a plan might be a good idea, is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Chairman. Since we're talking about operations, let me weigh in, at least from administration's perspective, if I may. Obviously, I can only speak for those individuals that, departments that work for me, and obviously the clerk doesn't work for me, so she works for you. But basically, let's say, in our larger departments, we probably set up Records Managers in the mid-two thousands, you know, on all of those. So we have Records Managers in our major departments that take care of our records, and we utilize Christie's services and Robert Ballard to advise us and to keep us aware of new changes and the rules and the retentions necessary. We have them review our schedules and interface with the State Library issues. And I believe that's their role. You know, the last thing I would want from administration perspective is have Robert Ballard come over and tell Public Works exactly where they need to file their stuff and what they need to do to take care of managing their information, because they know it better than anybody else. That might not be the case with the smaller departments, but with that said, I've never had any of my administration come up to me and say that the service that Robert Ballard's been providing is inadequate, or they would like to have more services. And I haven't really had that conversation with my staff either, you know, both of my staff from my office, and I'll have that conversation when I go back. But what I could offer the board is to pose that question to all my directors, to see if they are being provided adequate services, and to ensure that my belief is correct, and if they have any suggestions on anything that they might want to see done differently or provided to them that isn't currently being provided, we could certainly compile that for the board and bring it back to you, and assist Christie in bringing that information forward to the board, so that you can evaluate where you want to place this position, or if you want to make any changes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. We do have a motion on the floor to do precisely that, and I believe it was indicated ninety days.
My only change would be, I don't know why it would have to take ninety days. Why?
It could be sooner. I mean, I just threw that out there because I'm not sure how long it would-
I think up to-
Up two is what I'm, the motion.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
There's no second either.
Since we're going into the budget workshop, the Recorder's asked for pay raises for a good portion of her employees. Maybe that's something the Recorder may want to reconsider and hire a part-time person and call that part-time person a micrographics manager slash Records Management for the records in her department. I mean, it's just a thought.
May I address that? Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop, that proposal, I have fully funded, and I am actually giving money back to the general fund on top of all of my requests. So if we want to consider that, maybe I just keep the budget I have. We are increasing our revenues, and that's something that we could certainly look at.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear on this, what I was looking at is a Record Manager who works for the county, not who is assigned to a department, no matter which department it is, because if you assign somebody to my office, they're going to be working a lot for me, and they will get to the rest of you when I get to them. I think that's kind of what I was looking at, was to move the Record Manager so that he's basically not a department head or director or anything like that, but he's his own person who reports in at the clerk, because I figured that would be the logical place because of all the county records we keep. But it gives him more time to, instead of coming out when somebody calls him, you know, he has his checklist where he goes, you know, I better go out, I haven't talked to, you know, this department, or they got new people in to free him up for more time, instead of having regularly assigned duties to another department that's really not part of his job description. I guess that's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. And I see your point and the direction in which you're headed. I can see quite a great deal of, that that might be very advantageous to us on several aspects, but I'm a little hesitant to make that decision at this moment without fully understanding how that would affect the Recorder's Office, so Supervisor Moss has a motion yet to be seconded, but I'll do that. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
So the motion is to bring it back in how many days?
Up two.
Up to ninety days?
Days.
For further discussion?
For further discussion, that's-
And the plan from the county staff.
So we can further vet the idea. Okay, there being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe we have a three to two. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Item number thirty-four. Discussion, possible action, accept the report and recommendations of the Citizens' Animal Shelter Needs Assessment Committee regarding the animal shelter sites and facilities. This is brought to us by Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Moss.
I think we all have a copy of the report and the data collection and proposed sites and whatnot. I really do think, at this point, Mr. Hepler will obviously have something to add, but maybe we should set this matter for a public workshop to go through and then make some decisions after that. That would be my suggestion, but I'd like to hear Mr. Hepler's suggestions, and then I'll reserve my fire to then.
Very good, very good. Good morning, Mr. Hepler. Welcome back.
Yes, and I was kind of sitting back wanting to get up and talk about records and stuff because as the Director of OMB, over the years, worked very closely with that, so, but I'll move on. I have been the honor Chairman Watson and Board members of being the Chairman of the Mojave County Citizens' Animal Shelter Needs Assessment Committee and our report that we have. that we have. Uh, if you want, I mean, I have a PowerPoint presentation, but if you want to set up a workshop or something, I'd be more than happy to do that and delay what we're doing, so that's up to your decision. But I can do a PowerPoint.
I think a workshop would be grand. It's, it's a great deal of information to, to go through and just a brief amount of time.
And I have to say, I think they did an outstanding job on that report.
It's a lot of work, uh, the, actually, uh, my vice chairman, Billy Tedesco, and Donna Hill are here. Tracy Langley, who's on the committee, uh, she's stuck in Texas right now, and Sam's over in Africa hunting, so, uh, we'd be more than happy to set up time to do the workshop for you.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I like that idea.
I'd like very much to do that, and that way it'll give us an opportunity to explore the entirety of, of all your ideas. And again, thank you to your committee. Job well done. I know it takes, it has taken hours and hours and hours to put this together, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. And I want to make, uh, one correction. I, I know that Supervisor Johnson called me up. On page eight, uh, there, uh, is some acreage on the, uh, in the report, and it shows the approximate acreage of twenty-four point three seven acres, and that was carried over from, uh, looking at the, uh, lake area. And actually, um, where the current shelter is, is about one point eight acres, and then when we're looking at some other land, uh, acquiring some other pieces of, of property, it would increase that to two point five. So, uh, that number there, put it as a two point five on page eight where it says parcel size. I'd like to make that correction noted in the record.
Okay.
Please. Thank you very much. Let us know when the workshop is.
Chairman Watson. I would, I would just again like to thank Tracy Langley, Donna Hill, Gene Hepler, Billy Tedesco, and Sam Skamart. Oh, yeah, I was following their, their seriousness and how diligent you were and, um, the called and asked questions, and it was probably one of the, the best, um, you know, one of these things that I've been involved with, and I wanted to just really thank you publicly for that.
And all for free.
And all for free.
Except, I, you know, and when you're saying that, I wanted to note, if I can, uh, the staff, Nick Cont before he retired, Tim Welsh, Chris Ballard, and Steph, and, uh, Ms. Chapman, uh, really helped us, uh, work with us to produce this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hepler. Uh, we have one person signed up to speak to that, and we'll give her the opportunity if she would so wish to do that. Ms. Gilmore?
Do you want my name and address, Chairman Watson?
Good morning.
Good morning. I think you know who I am. Um, as there's going to be-
Actually, I, I need your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Patty Gilmore. Nineteen seventy, Palmer Drive, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, eight six four oh six. Chairman Watson, supervisors, thanking you, thanking you once again for allowing me to speak. As there is going to be a public workshop, um, I would like to keep my recommendations to that, because I do have recommendations regards this because of my position and my expertise in now building another shelter. So, um, I would like to be hopefully part of that workshop. Okay? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll sit down and try to figure out a time for that workshop, uh, within the next several weeks, if possible. Okay? Pardon me?
Do you want to make a motion to just set?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that item thirty-four be set for a workshop at a time to be determined by the chairman.
Second.
Be great. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-five. Discussion, possible action regarding, uh, guidance and consideration of avenues for potentially resolving the litigation impasse of the Southwest Point Energy Center, LLC, versus the Arizona Department of Revenue and Mojave County. Mr. Esquen.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need any action on thirty-six or so, or thirty-five or six.
Okay.
That's correct, uh, Chairman. We can go as discussed in, in, in executive session.
Okay. Thereby removing item thirty-five and thirty-six as being prior discussion. Item number thirty-seven. Discussion, possible action regarding the acceptance, accept the resignation of Rashida Saminsky, Mojave County fiduciary, effective May twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen, and appoint Carol Collins as the interim Mojave County Public Fiduciary, effective May twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen, at range twenty-nine, step one, which equates to thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour, or eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents annually, to allow time for staff to formally recruit for the Mojave County fiduciary position and post. Mr. Hendricks?
I need a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. That completes our agenda for today. Make a motion for, close the regular session?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to close the regular session? So move. And we'll take a break until we get into the next, how many minutes? Fifteen? Fifteen minutes until we have our presentation on the budget.